Wrong with the problem.
Anybody live? Good to go. All right, great. All right, welcome everyone to the special meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the sole purpose, considering an appeal to the decision of the US District Court, Eastern District of PA in the matter of PA State Lodge Fraternal Order of Police at L versus Township of Springfield at L, Civil Action Number twenty-three dash three-three-two dash KSM. Today's date is December fourth, twenty-twenty-three. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building and is also being offered in a live streaming feature. The meeting will also be made available on the Township's website beginning tomorrow. Comments will not be accepted, excuse me, remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting will provide as part of the posted agenda. So Taylor, if you could summarize any public comment received prior to the meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Lee. We received five public comments prior to the close of the business day today. All five were, expressed their opposition to an appeal to the matter before the board this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This time, please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honor the servicemen and women who placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, the Commissioners are here with us this evening. I will also announce that I believe we have a couple former Commissioners in the audience, Commissioner Shum, welcome, Commissioner Gillies. Anyone I'm missing? Great. I will announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session on Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, to discuss one litigation matter. The Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board will only be accepting public comment on the matter before this evening. Please be advised that once the public comment period is closed, the Board will no longer accept questions from the floor. Following any discussion and/or vote by the Board, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on tonight's agenda item, that would be the appropriate time. If you come to the microphone, please begin with your name and address for the record.
Everybody's getting up at least when I start this. I presume you're doing this with the current Board now as opposed to waiting because you have a time limitation? And, um, correct.
Any name and address?
Oh, sorry. Bob Gillies, two thirteen Woods Road. Technically, I don't have to give that free speech. Mike, I have a couple of questions. One, is this Board considering this tonight, or are you just going to bring us all here and vote no, just so you have it on record? Are you seriously considering?
We're considering whether to move forward with the appeal.
So some of the Board members are considering voting yes, because you could have done nothing and it would have just passed. And so you must really be considering saying yes, some of you must be. Is that correct?
We are considering that tonight.
Okay.
And to clarify your first question, there's from the ruling, you have thirty days to appeal, so.
Right, but if you didn't appeal, but if you didn't, if you didn't, if you just didn't do anything, it just would have died away, right?
We're considering the appeal tonight.
Right. So you're choosing to continue this potentially.
We're considering the appeal tonight, Bob.
But you could have not.
I don't know what else.
You could have not held a meeting and it would have, you know, just happened. So somebody on this Board wants to appeal, a couple. I mean, enough people on this Board want to appeal it. That's why we're having the meeting. Am I reading the room correctly? That's all I'm asking.
It hasn't been taken, Bob.
Okay, but there's been discussion. And there has have been. So then Jim, you set the agenda, Jim Lee.
Yes.
You set the agenda, President, right?
Bob, tonight, we're considering the vote for the appeal.
All right, so last time you mentioned on the radio where the cost came from and you said you had a surplus, so you just took the money out of surplus to pay for this case to date. So now you're in the budget season, so where are you with the projection of the cost for this vote in your budget? There has to be, I mean, I know Jim's, Jim Garrity, the solicitor, is not going to be, you'll most likely hire a second outside counsel, I would presume. Is that, if you do, if you proceed, would you hire an outside counsel to defend this?
At this point, until we decide how we're moving forward, it is a matter of open litigation, so we're not going to discuss those details.
Well, we're talking about the budget. I'm not talking, you've had to, you've had to have assumed a cost. You've had to make a projection on the cost. What is the projection of the cost for this appeal? You've had to make, I mean, any decision you make, you're making a, you know, you're making a evaluation of cost benefit. You know, if you're going to put a stop sign up, what's the cost before you vote on it? You know the cost before you vote on it? And you vote on it. Do you know the cost of what an appeal would be? Projection.
You'll be in the neighborhood of somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars is what our expectation is.
Ten thousand dollars, okay. So the township doesn't have a need for ten thousand dollars. You prefer to spend it elsewhere. The next couple of things are, I guess I might as well grab my notes, try to do it out, but are you, why, what is the basis for your appeal? The potential appeal of this decision?
Well, if we appeal the decision, it's because collectively, we don't agree that it was moot.
Well, you just can't say I don't agree with the judge. There has to be a reason. You have to have a valid reason.
We're not commenting on either. It's an ongoing litigation, Bob. For appealing, it's obvious.
But you're asked, you're going to ask vote.
That we don't agree with the ruling, that we'd like to seek an appeal. So please, if you have a serious question, I know this is your game. You do the, I'm just asking questions.
Well, let's do it this way.
Ask a serious question. I'll give you a serious answer.
That is a serious question. That is a serious question, sir.
Okay, well, you know why we would appeal, because we don't agree with the ruling. It's as simple as that.
But it doesn't work that way in the courts. There has to be a legal basis for you to disagree with the judge's opinion. You can't just say, oh, no, but I disagree. Well, I know any way to go. Otherwise frivolous. And if it's frivolous, we're paying ten thousand dollars. Plus, if we lose, what are the fees? I know you got a couple of people to testify that it disturbed them at the last, at the hearing before. But, and the judge dismissed them out of hand because you're treading on the constitutional rights of your workers. And you were pretty well slapped down from the ruling. And now you're going to do it, go at it again. And you are personally, you know, what happens if we decide that we, the judge decides that you have to pay all the legal fees of the, you know, the police association? So we would have to pay that too. And at what point do you then take personally responsibility for, there is a level where you are personally responsible if you make a decision that is out of the realm of your role. We talked about this before. We told you before you are treading on constitutional rights. You ignored it and you moved forward. Not all of you, some of you didn't. And, you know, the better, the better angels of the constitutions, you know, did what they were supposed to do. But I guess I just don't understand. You know, so what is the exposure anticipated if you lose? Another calculation.
I can answer that. Exposure, if we lose, is the attorney's fees that have been requested and whatever it costs detention.
And what would those fees be?
No idea.
Well, you got a projection, Jim. I mean, there's got to be a projection, you know what?
He gave you a projection.
He gave you a projection of the cost for us to defend this case. He didn't give a projection, so we could at least double that, at least double that. Right, because if, and if, if our township solicitor is defending this, we could probably quadruple it because of what the fees would be for a normal solicitor versus your township solicitor. I mean, Jim charges a lot more when it's not township related. So those fees, so you have not calculated any of those costs in that. And then personally, if somebody decided that this was frivolous and you guys were individually responsible, are you willing to put that money up yourself? I mean, that's something I would want to know if I'm sitting in your position. And then, you know, this is all about racism and I still want to go back to that. What, what is demonstrate, what part of our department has demonstrated the least bit of racism in this township? And go back as far as you want. Could you give me an example? You said you answered a question. That was a legitimate question.
I'll stand by the previous comments that I made at length on this matter.
That you think the department is racist then?
No, I did not say that.
So you don't think it's racist?
I'm standing by my previous comments.
I don't know what that was. Could you enlighten us for the people?
I'll share them when I put many in writing, a radio interview.
This is, we're here in a meeting, open meeting about a new issue. So you must, you should repeat that statement then.
I'll stand by the answers that I get.
You'll stand by your answers. Sorry. Okay. I would like to know. I know you're going to say no to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What has the solicitor advised you related to this case in terms of what your exposures are and what your chances of winning are?
First of all, this is public comment, not public interrogation portion.
Well, yes, he just said I could ask questions. He said I could ask questions.
All right, and I'm going to try to answer your question. But my first point is, this is public comment, not public interrogation. Second, second point, second point is, second point is, the Board, as Jim said, had a long executive session with the insurance company defense lawyer who represented this, represented the township in this matter and went over the opinion and the pros and cons, the legal issues, the costs, every aspect of it. And did not make a final decision because they're not allowed to. They have to make the decision in a public meeting like we're in right now. So this meeting was called. So every aspect of the pros and cons of the appeal were already discussed with the attorney who is representing the township in this case.
So you do have an outside solicitor?
We always have.
Okay, that was, that was ignored the first time. The question wasn't answered.
The solicitor was assigned by the insurance company.
Okay, so is it, so we're leaning on the insurance company first? I guess I'm not allowed to ask questions anymore. So my public comment would be that as a Board, as a body, I know Mr. May was not involved in the initial decision, but he is now. And I know when I appeared before you to fill that seat, you specifically asked me how I rule on this, Mr. Lee. And I told you that I would recommend that you wouldn't proceed because of the many things that have been outlined since the very beginning of this case. And thus far, everybody who is not on the side of the police or not on the side of the, either side here, but looking at it objectively as a constitutional matter and your constitutional responsibilities under the state of Pennsylvania, that you should not be pursuing this. And I believe personally, you're violating your oath of office. And I don't know, Bean, you're not going to answer any questions? That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Bernard Kling, two fourteen Station Avenue in Orland. So I just want to clarify one more time. It is thirty days. It is not sixty days. It is thirty days for an appeal. And that's absolutely unchangeable.
That is, that is a deadline that cannot even in all cases be extended by stipulation of the other counsel. Courts have held that, I don't care what the other counsel says.
That's it. So, okay, so the lame duck session, it has to be within that.
It has to be within thirty days if at all.
And it is a lame duck session. Okay. Um, I think we should take into consideration it as a lame duck session. This, to my knowledge, was initiated by a Commissioner who is no longer on the commission in large part. And while the Springfield Township police may have not been outwardly, according to you, accused of racism, several members of this Board were accused by that Commissioner, former Commissioner of racism. I did not hear any vigorous defense of oneself against those charges. I can't believe that someone actually listened to those charges and did not come out with a vigorous defense of oneself. So was there racism on this Board as charged by former Commissioner Graham? Were his charges valid? Some of you were charged.
I think, if I may, I think the members of the the Commissioners have dealt with any of those types of allegations directly with Commissioner Graham.
I would do it in public if I was charged in public. But that's me. Um, so I would, you know, I would consider the source of where this all emanated from. I would consider the fact that you lost. And I would consider the nature of how it was lost, where it came from once again, and how much it cost as Mr. Gillies had brought up. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alice Lesnick, one oh five Erdenheim Road. And I'm speaking as a community member in favor of the appeal. I have found the lawsuit that was brought divisive. I believe that the Commissioners in listening, not as I read in the local coverage of the judgment, to a handful, a small handful of community members, but to a lot of community members over a long period of time and a conscientious attempt to share perspectives on complicated matters of history, racism, and standpoint, our understandings of these things changing with our experiences. So my, my understanding is that the Commissioners, you were not acting on your own as individuals, but as representatives who were trying to listen to many concerns over a pretty long period of time. And in listening, weren't necessarily always agreeing with every single thing said, but were trying to go towards the spirit of some greater unity. So I'm in favor of the appeal because I think appeals are part of our legal system to try to safeguard processes to foster unity in situations of a lot of complexity and difficulty and challenge, which we're definitely in. So the idea that it was just a handful of people or one Commissioner who brought understandings about the different ways that symbols land on different people based on their histories. And the comment that was quoted in multiple news sources by the judge that this listening was quote unprofessional, that talking about race and racism was unprofessional, also gave me pause about the validity of the ruling. So I'm speaking for myself, for the kind of community I want to live in and fight for. Just the kind of care that I hope we can show one another, the kind of patience and grace. And my sense of the cost is that my guess is the extent of the cost has already been borne by the bringing of the lawsuit. But my sense is if some of this costs some money, that if there's some investment needed to truly clarify where we are so that listening can remain possible, it's also worth some cost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jenny French, six oh four Grace Lane, Flower Town. I agree with every word this person just said. It's, it's not about throwing some money towards something to try to appease some people. It's about a concept, a symbol that's very important. Our flag is a very important symbol. And you can't just assume that what one person does with it might be all right. The symbol of Nazism, the swastika was not originally a symbol of Nazism, you know, it was, it was an ancient symbol, but the Nazis appropriated it. And that would never appear on a flag that the township police would use. It wouldn't happen because we all recognize that kind of a symbol. But the thin blue line flag, it's a little more questionable because it's more recent. And it's changed more recently. But discussing it is something we all have to do, that kind of issue, because we each have a different idea about it. And there's nothing wrong with spending time and money on figuring out how we want to appear in this society. The police are a force of power. You can't, they can't assume that whatever symbol they decide to use will be all right. They have to to err on the side of caution because they're a force of power. They have to make sure that the symbol that they put out there is something that's acceptable and that stands for what we, we all feel it should stand for. I think they may have tried to do that, but I think they erred. And it's something worth, worth the money and worth the time and worth our talking about. And it's not something to make a joke about or pressure people to come up with something that sounds good so that we can all go home and forget about it because it's going to keep coming back to us. It will always come back to us and we'll always have to be talking about it.
Thank you.
Jane Thomas, Dan, Rhode Island. First of all, I don't even know what the decision was, what was said in the decision. I haven't seen anything in the paper or, or whatever. So could somebody tell me what the, why we were ruled against?
In, very quickly, in thirty-six pages, the judge granted the FOP's motion for summary judgment. That means there was not a trial. The judge looked at depositions, the pleadings. I don't think there were any affidavits that I remember, but mostly depositions and the pleadings and decided that the township could not prove with every benefit of the doubt given to the township, could not prove that they were entitled to the relief requested. And that was about twenty days ago.
So in other words, they're not against that thin blue line? It were, for the, like First Amendment, we can still use that.
The pros and cons of the thin blue line really weren't discussed. It was on, what, the only thing discussed by the judge was the resolution passed by the Commissioners saying that the flag or the symbol could not be put on police cars, uniforms, coffee mugs, if they were visible to the public, that type of thing. And that's what the judge said basically in thirty-six pages.
Well, to begin with, they can't put anything else on the police cars that's like by, not resolution, I can't think of the word, but there you go. So that, that's kind of like a moot point, in my opinion. And a pin or whatever that, like I've heard many times, is violation of the First Amendment right. So that's kind of that. And I know, Glenn, we were asked what the cost has been so far and we're not hearing that kind of. And the settlement costs, we still don't know what all the cost will be for the appeals or anything else. But personally, I like to know when we're going to stop throwing good money after bad. So that's my opinion. No appeal.
Thank you.
You know, that if we don't, we're not getting our money back. I don't think you understand that, right?
Commissioner Stanis just wanted me to explain that if we, that if we don't appeal, the attorney's fees are blocked. That is, we're going to pay the attorney's fees if we don't appeal. So anybody who is under the mistaken.
Well, that's not decided yet, but it's a risk to be decided.
They can be argued a little bit, but, but if there's anyone who's under the mistaken impression that if we don't appeal, we don't have to pay the attorney's fees, that's wrong. That is incorrect. I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
How do we rate the attorney's fees if we might have to pay now versus fully appeal cost?
Well, that is the only thing that is correctly stated is that the attorney's fees from here on would be added to what they are now. But if, but if, if the appeal is taken and if the appeal is sustained, there will be no attorney's fees.
And to clarify, you do mean the attorney's fees of the opposing counsel, not our attorney's fees?
Yeah, our attorney's fees, the attorney's fees at the very, very, very beginning from my firm have been paid by the township and everything since has been paid by the insurance company.
Michelle Chacitis, Orland, PA. I have what I think is the oath of office that all of the elected Commissioners recited, stated on the days that you were sworn into office. And it states, I, your name, obviously, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and that I will discharge the duties of, and there's another blank for Township Commissioner. There's nothing else, if I'm correct. There is nothing else on here that you are obliged to do in writing. So the single most important thing that you are, your responsibility, not just to the, your office, but to the community members and to the people that you serve, is to defend, support, and uphold the Constitution. What you have done already in bringing the litigation or bringing the issue, not the litigation, but bringing this issue, you took on responsibilities and, in my opinion, a large overstep for your office. In doing so, you incurred insurance fees or additional insurance fees. I'm sure the insurance will go up in, in the future, given this event. You've incurred additional solicitors' fees. You'll likely spend, I don't believe for a second, five to ten thousand dollars on an appeal. I would think it would be tens of thousands of dollars, not just in filing the paperwork, but hiring a constitutional lawyer, moving the, the case itself to a larger forum. A mistake, and I'm, I'm using that word in the most generous part of my being, a mistake A mistake, and I'm I'm using that word in the most generous part of my being, a mistake by the Board of Commissioners was made, in my opinion. That mistake has now become the burden of the taxpayer. So I also don't believe for a second that you're not aware of what the fees are to a large, much larger extent. I don't believe for a second that there's unknowns in terms of, or you wouldn't, you'd no offense to you, Mr. Garrity, but that would be poor counsel if they didn't give you some ballpark of what the fees would be. But my comment, because I'm not going to get my questions answered, my comment is the the very day that you took office, the first thing.
Let me just make one correction, you're free to ask questions, and we're free to answer some, we will, some.
Well, you you were.
If you if you ask a question in good faith, I will answer it.
Okay, well, I don't believe that either, Jim, I'm sorry. And you know my name's Michelle, so please don't call me ma'am.
Okay.
Only because I we know each other, so I'm not, I don't, I don't want to pretend that we don't. The the single thing that you swore when you took your office, everyone, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not undermining this in any way, is to defend the Constitution. And it's the very constitutional right of the Springfield Township Police Benevolent Association that you are trying to to restrain or undermine at the cost of the taxpayer. If you have personal issues, one way or the other, they are your own. And if you choose to pursue them, do that on your dollar, not on ours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Locker, 1202 Wakefield Road, Flower Town. I've lived in Springfield Township for over 50 years, so I'm really happy to be here. I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen. I am not representing any group of which I am a member. I have not consulted with anyone, so whatever I say tonight represents my thoughts. As a child of the 60s, I'm well aware of free speech and what it means. The Supreme Court has ruled that words, symbols, and actions are all related to free speech and are therefore protected by the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. As a student of history, I am well aware of the changing meaning that symbols and free speech attain with the changing circumstances of the times in which we live. What started out as a symbol with one meaning has evolved to have other meanings associated with it because of recent history. As a teacher, I was careful to make sure my students understood the difference between denotation, the dictionary meaning of a word, and connotation, the other meanings that emotions association with the words bring. The blue line symbol has both meanings. I understand what the original meaning meant, but it now has heightened emotional meanings that complicate decisions. Bottom line, the commissioner should let the court decision stand and not pursue it. You will ultimately lose with the free speech decision. Hopefully, the Springfield Township Police Department will use the symbol judiciously and understand the emotional connotation it brings to important members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ray McMahon, I live on Orland Mill Road. And once again, this board is meeting to discuss the future action regarding the Police Benevolent Association. It would not be proper to discuss the future without revisiting the past. Members of the PBA were accused of using a racist symbol as their logo. The instigator of this accusation was, in the in the opinion of many, out to make a name for himself. To date, no evidence has been presented that supports any of his claims. Yet this board voted in favor of a resolution that would deny the PBA access to certain areas, impacting negatively on their fundraising efforts and violating their First Amendment rights. It should be pointed out that these areas were built with or supported by taxpayer money. It should be noted that the person responsible for this debacle, the same person who made one unfounded accusation after another, has moved on. He has left us to mend a divide that never existed before in Springfield Township. He tried to fix something that wasn't broken. So that brings us to the question of the day, where do we go from here? What is the objective of the board appealing the verdict? A verdict, by the way, that was very clear in its support of the First Amendment. Do you think you can still win? Win what? There's nothing left to win. Everybody in Springfield has already lost. The police have lost some confidence in in the the public and in the elected official support that support them. There is a segment of the public that feels they lost because the verdict of the court did not go their way. There is a segment that has lost, that feels lost because they feel the law and the Constitution were ignored. And all of us have lost because this board spent many thousands of dollars, taxpayer dollars, to pursue an issue that many felt was without merit and doomed to fail. Now we need to to decide if more money should be spent to appeal the verdict of the court. I would ask this board what I hope you're asking yourself. What do we hope to accomplish by appeal? What wrong will we correct by filing an appeal? Do you believe you can win, and again, win what? In closing, I would ask most important question. Would you vote for an appeal to appeal this verdict if the funds for said appeal were coming out of your pocket instead of the money tree known as the taxpayers?
My name is Rob Goldberg, 105 Erdentheim Road. So the police are employees, extremely important employees, but employees nonetheless. And free speech at work, as you all know, differs from free speech in the most general sense. I can't make my, the customers of my employer feel unsafe when I'm at work, and if I did so, I'd be fired in short order. You know, and so, you know, I live in Springfield, and it sent, and in a sense, the public served, served me, they served the the public. So if a Springfield Township police officer were to come to my house with a symbol on his uniform that he must know affects negatively affects a certain percentage of the of the of the township's population, and he wouldn't know which percentage he was encountering, which person he was encountering, whether they felt comfortable with it or extremely uncomfortable, that would make me feel uncomfortable because it shows kind of a disregard for what was a a known issue in the township. So I think we should pursue the appeal, and I think I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Good evening, my name is Denise McNamara, I live at 18 Weiss Avenue, I've lived there for 40 years. First, the comment that the gentleman just made is inaccurate, an officer would not wear that emblem on his uniform. Why didn't you correct him?
Yeah, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes, the gentleman that just spoke said an officer coming to his house with the thin blue line on his uniform would make him feel uncomfortable. That would never happen, that's not the issue here.
I just asked for that to be corrected.
So why didn't you, why didn't you explain to him that he doesn't have to be uncomfortable because that issue would never happen? An officer would never wear that on his uniform. He would wear it in his private life.
There have been instances where it has been on the person during.
He would wear it in his private life. It would not be on his police vehicle, it would not be on his police uniform. Why, why are you?
I'm not going to get into specifics, I'm saying, before this, before this issue ever came. No.
What you specifically said, sir, you would be uncomfortable.
We can't have, we can't have.
Address the board.
You have to address the board, please. I I can only say, again, I'm not going to get into particulars of it, it's the middle of a of litigation, there were.
Can.
Instances that were brought to the board, brought to the township, that the symbol was on police officers, on their person.
During their business hours.
While they were on duty, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm aware of that. Okay, I have one other comment or question. I don't care who answers the question, I would like each of you to answer the question. In pursuing this appeal, do you feel that your responsibility is to represent your constituents who voted you to the chair?
Absolutely.
You do?
Yeah.
Do the majority of the, what, I'm sorry, what word do you represent, Jim?
Word three.
Do the majority of the taxpayers in word three support your decision to appeal this decision?
I can't tell you how every person feels. I can tell you that a lot of people feel a lot of different ways. I know there's support on both sides, vary. Did I poll 1,200 voters in word three? No, exactly, it's 53%. I I can't answer that, ma'am.
Well, I think before each of you make that decision and vote to appeal, I think you should know what the people who you represent, how they feel about this issue. No one has taken a poll that I received, no one has asked me, it wasn't on a ballot anywhere, we're a small township. I talked to lots of people in this township, and 90% of the people that I have interacted with think that this is a ridiculous pursuit. But I think that you need to do your homework and know that before you spend any more money and make, and make more of a deal of it than it is. Like, you've got a decision, move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Glenn Shum, Allison, Rhode Island. My personal opinion is not to pursue this any further. Since the first round, things have been very amicable, and the police are feeling better, I believe, in my conversations, because the police believe that the township has abandoned them in this endeavor. Now, all of this about the blue line flag becoming more of a symbol, I've not read anywhere else that it's becoming more of a symbol. It was used, to my knowledge, at that one rally, and that's where it got traction, that it was against, was a racist symbol. I think what we've done, what's going on here, is you sort of ripped the scab off the wound, and you've opened it up again. And I don't, I don't see the purpose in that, and that's just my opinion, thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Baskin, 419 Halls Lane. I'd like to know how much has already been spent on this?
So when, when we passed the resolution in January, I think the total internal legal fees was probably about $20,000, and I think we talked about that publicly. And that was over the year and a half or something that this was discussed and negotiated. Excuse me?
Only $20,000?
Yes, yes, ma'am. That was when we passed the resolution in January.
Is your lawyer any good? $20,000 for a lawyer, that's it? $20,000 for the lawyer? Well, I don't know, are you any good? You said there's a different lawyer.
You're not charging.
$20,000, that is it for an entire?
That is how much the township has paid so far because the insurance company appointed a lawyer, the insurance company paid that lawyer.
And how much will the insurance go up?
I have no idea.
So you, there's a lot of, like, questions you don't know the answer to, and moving forward, it would be nice if you did have the answers to those questions. Have said, has anyone asked the insurance company, how is this going to affect our premium? Because I sure as hell would. If I was doing something at my house, I, if I got into a car accident, I'd be asking, how's this going to affect my insurance premium? No one's asked that of the insurance company?
Are you opposed to us appealing?
Um, obviously.
You were opposed to the resolution from the start?
Absolutely.
Okay, I understand. But I don't know that any amount of money is going to make you feel better about anything that we did in this regard?
No, but.
If we were spending money on something.
You have zero idea how much this is going to cost.
The township was incurring costs for something that you really believed in, you probably wouldn't make the same same argument. So, look, the money is important, we're all residents, too, we're taxpayers, we don't want to spend any more than than we want to. We have.
I would not ask you, I would not ask you, I would not ask you.
What is the right thing to do?
I would not ask you to propose a resolution that infringes on anyone's First Amendment rights.
We feel like we didn't.
The court says you did.
And courts sometimes are reversed.
Hi, I'm Gina Doyle, with Sahigan Avenue, Flower Town, PA. I am a mother of a veteran. Sorry. This is hard for me. The fact that you stand up here and you pledge allegiance to your flag and you take a bow of silence for our veterans that are currently serving and have fought and died for this country, for our constitutional rights, and then you want to come here and trample on them, is extremely upsetting. And I'm sure not only the police feel that you failed them, I feel that you've failed us in that you have responsibility to uphold the Constitution, and this is a First Amendment violation, period. And I don't feel that you're serving any of us well at this point. And that's it, I vote no on this.
Thank you.
Hi, Loretta Dugan, 11 Erdentheim Road. I'm not a public speaker, I don't have prepared statement. I attended the meetings at the library when many, many, many people in our community spoke eloquently, you know, about the thin blue line symbol. And and I've talked to many, many neighbors as well. Guess what I always come back to is, why would would our police want to offend? You know, it's like, if it's offensive to people in our community, in my mind, if that is communicated, I would think that the Police Benevolent Association would say, we don't, you know, we, we, we don't want to offend anybody in our community. And that's what I, I'm in favor of this appeal, but that's the piece that I keep going back to in my mind and just don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been here since 1963, and this is the worst issue that's happened to this township with the division. I believe back when all the stuff was going on, a lot of people who spoke were not residents of the township, but yet it was so loud and spoken so much that that's what resonates in the ears. All the township people with whom I've spoken and people outside of this township with whom I've spoken, even though somebody kept looking at me and shaking their head the whole time I was talking about it, they had no problem with that thin blue line. And that all people of color that I've spoken to, they've had no problem with that thing. And and I also kind of think if if people were aware of who makes up the PBA, that it is a multicultural organization, that maybe they would realize that there's no threat to anybody. Could do better words, but I'm not good.
Thank you.
Good evening. Angelina Banks, I live in Windmore. I have prepared something too I'd like to share. The right to free speech is vitally important because freedom of speech is inextricably intertwined with freedom of thought. Judge Marston's ruling declared that this resolution is unconstitutional. It is a troubling and sober thought to realize that this township holds the position that the commissioner's opinions trump the US Constitution and openly want to legislate viewpoint discrimination. To use an elected seat as a bully pulpit is reprehensible and inexcusable. Judge Marston's opinion echoed sentiments and arguments shared in his very room over these many, many months. Points such as that this resolution is a viewpoint regulation. It prohibits employees, et cetera, from displaying only the thin blue line American flag and not from displaying flags for politically speech generally. The court questioned whether the government can ever permissibly regulate employee's speech based on viewpoint. The resolution is not only limited to the Township Police Department, but rather it broadly applies to all township employee, agents, and consultants. This breadth is especially suspect because the ban affects core political speech, an area where fit must be particularly close, given that the resolution prohibits political speech based on a particular viewpoint. Its overbreadth is particularly, particularly egregious. Also problematic is the fact that this resolution was not limited to work hours. During this process, the township itself has conceded that it has no evidence of workplace disruption caused by this logo. Neither has it caused a disruption to the relations between the police and the township residents. Yet, here we are again, on the edge of another ill-advised escapade. Even the consideration to appeal this ruling and continue to throw taxpayers' money down the drain on a frivolous lawsuit fueled by a former commissioner's personal vendetta is deeply unsettling. To pursue this further, despite the township's inability to show that the display of the flag has led to an erosion in public trust, smacks of arrogance and a lack of true respect for the laws that govern this country. As Justice Kennedy said, "The First Amendment freedoms are most in danger when the government seeks to control thought or justify its laws that, for that impermissible end." "The right to think is the beginning of freedom, and speech must be protected from the government because speech is the beginning of thought." Now, there have been many people that have spoken in support of the true meaning behind this symbol, that it is a show of support for law enforcement, a logo that represents the preservation of the rule of law, the protection of peace and freedom, and the sacrifice of fallen law enforcement officers. Freedom of speech is closely connected to freedom of thought, an essential tool for democratic self-governance. It leads to a search for truth. It helps people express their individuality, and it promotes a tolerant society open to different viewpoints. It's the foundation of self-fulfillment. The right to express one's thoughts and to communicate freely with others affirms the dignity and worth of each and every member of society. Freedom of expression is an end in itself and, as such, deserves society's greatest protection. At this point, a moment of grace would be to accept this decision and shut down all talks of an appeal. That would show humility on the township's part while also acknowledging that sometimes you do get things wrong. We are only human. Previously, courts have ruled that cities could not deny civil rights protesters the right to march just because they did not like what the activists had to say, including activists like Martin Luther King, because at that time, his viewpoints were controversial and offensive to some. If the stance that this body is taking and applied to history, those controversial strides would have never happened. You must consider all of the implications of this blatant disregard of our Constitution. Also, consider the rapid uptick of crimes in the collar communities of Philadelphia. You must take into account that crime is up over 30% in Montgomery County alone. This resolution directly has had a negative impact on Springfield Township's officer morale and of those in neighboring communities. To seek to limit the constitutional rights of the very men and women who swear to protect and serve everyone despite their personal viewpoints is appalling. The township's need to define permissible speech tempts or compels us to find value in any speech that's actually permitted. Throughout history, expressions of speech that the ruling class finds intolerable has always borne the brunt of government repression. History teaches that the first target of government repression is never the last. We should not give the government the power to decide which opinions are hateful, for history has taught us that government is more apt to use its power for repression rather than for public safety. Now, I don't speak for everyone in Springfield Township, obviously, but I know I speak for myself. I know I speak for people in this room, and I deeply speak in support of the brave men and women in our community. So, you know, I hope that you hear what I'm saying and you really understand what, what you guys are attempting to do here. And I would like to make sure that you know that I am against appealing this ruling. Thank you.
I did have two things until Ms. Banks spoke, so I have a third, but I'll save it for last. Sitting here listening, I do have a question. Is this an insurance company-driven appeal, an effort to negotiate away the previous fees from the police department that you, that we would be responsible for? Is that why we're making this appeal? Because, you know, you mentioned a lot of insurance, and we still have those fees to pay. And it would make sense that if you, I mean, it could be in a way to negotiate away, something say, we'll drop the appeal, you drop those fees. Is that, is that part of the thought process or not?
Well, there's, there's two elements to that. And the fees really doesn't go into the decision-making much. But from a pure financial standpoint, what you're applying is correct in that the appeal would be the best chance to reduce costs for the township, to win on the appeal.
Because you're rolling the dice, basically. You're rolling the dice on that.
The plaintiffs have filed for the township covering their attorney's fees.
As we told you.
If we don't, if we don't appeal, and that's granted by the judge, then we're responsible for the plaintiff's fees.
Okay.
If we appeal and win, that doesn't even come into play.
Have you?
The individual parties would then.
Have you asked the police department to withdraw those fees and you won't appeal? Not the police department?
So I was, I was making it clear financially, which, which is a smart move. But that is a minor factor in the decision.
Well, it's not minor.
The main decision is that if we're voting to appeal, it's because we don't agree with the merge of the ruling. And we are looking for the appeal court to weigh in. Now, if the appeal court agrees with the, with the ruling, then, then, you know, if you feel like from a constitutional way, we're wrong, then that's more truthful.
I guess it's right brain, right, right brain, left brain. I, I can't fathom how you can see that this is not in violation of, of the oath that I took, you took, and was just read. So.
If we're going to vote that we don't agree with it.
That is where we, we started.
Nor is our counsel advised.
My second issue was, I was going to bring up is Barrett. I wanted to thank you for 20 years of service. Been with you for 12 of those 20 years, maybe? Right?
Right.
And I really hope that your last vote, not budget-related, is a vote for the appeal, because you did a great job up to this point. Okay, just wanted to bring it out. But the final thing, which came up during Mrs. Banks' conversation, I would like to clarify something that she said and make sure I heard it correctly. And if, if not, maybe she can jump in and correct me. I thought there was something that she said that the township, the judge said that the township did not demonstrate any known disturbance because of the badge during work time. Did, did I hear that correctly from Ms. Banks? And I want to ask Jim, Gary, the solicitor, did I hear that correctly and was she correct in her statement?
I, I couldn't understand your restatement of her statement.
Angela, come up and read that, please.
So the statement that I read was directly from the decision. So let me see if I can find it.
Bob, did you have another question while she's looking for it?
I'm, I'm going to be able to expedite this. The court said in the decision that the township had not proven that there was a disturbance, harm.
Disruption.
There were, there were two points. She basically said there was no proof that it negatively impacted interactions with the police and the public. And then she also said, there was a comment, the, the issue was that it was only on one particular type of political speech and not all political speech, which essentially is viewpoint discrimination.
I think that was not Bob's question.
Right.
Your question, the first point, and I would only ask you to remember that this was a
Oh, sorry, I found it.
Summary judgment, not after a trial.
I found it. To pursue this fur, okay, so, so despite the township's inability to show that this, this, this display of the flag has led to an erosion in public trust of the police. So the township needed to prove that, and they were unable to.
No, the township was not given a chance to.
That's not worth, well, I'm, I'm just reading what her ruling says. That's not what she said.
All I want everyone to understand is this was a motion for summary judgment. There was no trial. There were no witnesses presented, nothing.
Okay. All right, because my, thank you. Because my question was, because Jim, Mr. Lee, you said clearly there was disruption, and you didn't want to get into it. And it was in direct contradiction to what the judge had said, and I just want that clarified is why that, you know, you, you had said that there was a disruption, but the judge said the township hadn't proven any.
I said that there was a clear disruption.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you did. You said it to all of us. You said it to all of us that, we could play the tape. Where's the red flag? On duty, and it caused a disruption.
That's why I'm confused. I didn't use the word disruption then. I was just disputing some. Ma'am had come to the microphone and said it had never happened, it was never been on a uniform. And I just responded that we did receive, the township received.
Okay, then.
I don't want to call it a complaint, but.
Then you would have reprimanded the officer for wearing, wearing something not on, not, that's not officially on duty.
I don't know what happened formally, but this is, this is the very beginning. When this symbol even started coming up with people reaching out and speaking about it.
So it wasn't any sort of disruption?
In that time, people did report to us.
So somebody wore it, and I presume the way it would work is that there would have been some sort of reformation, reprimand to that officer.
Or reminder, not to show.
Right, exactly. So it wasn't anything of a disruptive nature.
Egregious, because it was.
But it wasn't a disruptive nature. Okay, thank you. But there, I mean.
Stop, sorry.
There seems to be a lot of confusion with, with people about what exactly is happening and, and what this is all about. People believe that this logo is on their uniform, it's going to be, end up on their police cars, and they're going to be offended if, if a police officer comes to their home. Simply is not the case. The logo is being used by the Police Benevolent Association as a logo for their fundraising. Please, I, I encourage everyone to look at what the Police Benevolent Association does, what they're raising funds for. It's all community-based. It is not supporting some white supremacist group. It's not supporting some right-wing outlaw group. It is to benefit Springfield Township. If you don't look into that and find out what they're doing, you are doing yourself and them a disservice.
Thank you.
I simply have one more comment. It's a hypothetical. If a group of township residents got together and expressed the sentiment that wearing a tie was a symbol of white male patriarchy, would you be willing to shed your ties at public meetings? Would you think that was a right thing to do?
Probably not. All right, folks, the public comment is now closed. We'll move on to the, to the agenda. This time, I will make a motion regarding the appeal of the decision of US District Court, Eastern District of PA. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize their attorneys to appeal all relevant decisions of the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Pennsylvania in the matter of the PA State Lodge Fraternal Order of Police at Al versus Township of Springfield at Al, Civil Action Number 23-332-KSM to the Third Circuit Court of Appeals. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
If there's a second, is there questions or comments?
Yes. So I'll go first. So I would just say, right now, I, I've been on the fence about this. I'm going to vote against the appeal. And the reason for this is because I, I heard all the arguments. We sat here for a long time the other night. You know, from a technical point of view, I don't think the judge addressed any number of issues that we brought up. Didn't give us the right to, you know, argue in a trial setting. I thought it was deeply unfair. I thought it was unfair that an attorney would represent the Benevolent Association, the Fraternal Order of Police, basically for free, and stick us with the money. It looks to me as if it's kind of a money grab and an opportunity to get on the radio. But that being said, in the beginning, I had not even heard about the blue line flag. But I went along with the arguments that Eddie and some other people made, thinking that this would, I would hope, easily be resolved, and it was not. And when we came up with an idea of a resolution, I thought that was probably the most innocuous way or the, the least invasive way of dealing with this, because all it really does is support what our uniform regulation says anyway. And I was very surprised that this came up. And since then, it just, it's just sort of steamrolled. And so at this point, and I made a point at that point, that, that I was willing to do the resolution, but I'm not willing to do anything more. I'm not willing to sue anybody else, or, you know, if it comes down to that. We have defended a lawsuit now for the last year, and I'm going off the board. But I will just tell you, in the last two years, and part of this was when I was a president, it has been the hardest few years of my commissionership. And I'm very sorry that I had to sit through this and see this divisiveness in this community. I don't think the police are against us. We're not against the police. And my feeling about this appeal is that it's just going to roll it down the, roll it down the lane, and it's just going to continue with this, this sentiment, make things worse. And in my attitude, I don't want to see it. I don't want to walk out of here and be hearing about this in the next six months or a year, two years, and hear from policemen that, you know, the commissioner is a bunch of jerks and, you know, they're doing the wrong thing. And I just think we could just lay this to rest. That's my attitude.
Any other comments?
Let me just say, I, a couple of things that we heard frequent mention of the dollar amount. As you know, that's not all that needs to be addressed, though certainly it's something we are not disregarding or discounting in any way. I heard frequent mention of our previous commissioner, as though we individuals here are incapable of individual thought. And I think we are capable of individual thought and capable of representing our constituents. And part of that is erring on the side of protecting all people, whether we agree or not, and especially those have, that have historically been marginalized. And part of pursuing those protections includes following rules of law, which also includes the petition of higher courts. And so I think the appeal is the most appropriate. Not only is it appropriate because it's the right thing to do, as I grew up, you know, believing to do the right thing, because it's the right thing to do. And, and for those who are concerned about financially, it's also And, and for those who are concerned about financially, it's also appropriate to protect ourselves financially as well. Although that's not um, my main motivation uh, or purpose in pursuing this. Ultimately, I think we have a right to, and a concern, a legitimate one, uh, to um, distance ourselves from symbols and, and pro, and, and any type of mechanism that should denigrate the public trust in our institutions, specifically in our police, who we do want to encourage uh, to do well here. And so that is ultimately the reason behind all of this um, is, is being sure that we preserve public trust in our institutions. Uh, and so again, part of that includes the petition of higher courts, and I think appeal is appropriate. And I disagree that, you know, all people are around town calling us jerks, uh, certainly there's always someone who will.
I guess I would add, since I am due to the board, I was not around for when the resolution came to pass. Um, my experience with all the police officers that I've uh, encountered here in Springfield Township has been extraordinary. I think they're, they're fantastic people. Um, simultaneously, you know, what we do have is a symbol that causes great emotion to people and has different meanings to them. Um, and I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. You know, and it's something that we all take into consideration in all of our um, places of employment and in everything that we do. Um, I would love to see this community come together, I, I would love to see us um, put things to bed. Um, but simultaneously, you know, it can't be done by ignoring how people may be offended. And uh, and there is a pretty extensive history around this symbol. And, you know, it's not just exclusive to Springfield Township where people are offended by it. Now, there, there is case law, there is, you know, in communities across this nation where it causes problems. And I, last thing I want to see is something that causes problems for our police officers. And I would love for them to, to take the same stance.
Um, I, I've spoken on this at length and I hope um, you know, many of you have, have come to several of the meetings. Very few people, some have gone to most, but it's something that we talked about at great length in many meetings with many people. So uh, I hope you don't think that I was short with you tonight, and if I was short, it's because um, we're, we're just not going to relitigate the merits of everything that went into this tonight. I did mention that I've, I've written extensively on this, they want us to reach out, I'm happy to give you copies of, of my newsletters where I've addressed it. And it's a, it's, to me, it's a nuanced, difficult decision, it can't be just boiled down to you're with, with us or against us, you're pro-police, you're anti-police. There's just so much more nuance uh, to it than that. And I think everyone know, kind of knows where I stand on it, so there's not a mystery there. So, but if you'd like to reach out and talk about that further detail and read some of that, uh, I'm happy to, to accommodate and really talk to anyone about it. Um, to me, the appeal is, is a no brainer, uh, both from a financial protection standpoint, as Mr. Ratsoff mentioned, and just from the merits of the case. So um, for those that are so certain of the constitutionality of this, that an appeal would, would solidify it and if that rules in your favor, um, you know, for um, really a fraction of the call, the total cost is going to be on the appeal, most of the work is done. It's not that I want to spend an extra dollar than, than we have to, but uh, people don't have a problem spending money when it's something they care about and they believe in, and that's always going to be the counter argument. And that's fine. Excuse, there's that, sorry. So um, I'll be voting to, to proceed with the appeal. And if the appeal court rules differently, then there's just more uh, certainty on what the constitutionality is.
I have a comment. I've been pretty clear where I stand on this. Since the original Facebook post I have, something so simple as a conversation with either the police chief, the Benevolent Association, or the township manager, none of this would be going on right now. Rather than have a civil discussion, someone chose to throw a hand grenade in a room and then leave. What trust my fellow colleagues think they have right now, if they were to move forward in this appeal with the police department, is completely gone. The damage is done. Divide is there. This community was together before this. I was against it, but I wasn't trying to make a name for myself in another organization. I was representing the township. And if that issue was that important to that person, he'd still be here and see it to the end. So for any of you who are thinking about moving this forward, I caution you that the damage is going to be unreparable, that you're about to cause to good men and women that none of you know outside of the uniform. Because none of you have gone over that side of the building and tried to understand who the person behind the badge is. And I know because I'm down there and you're not. So I would say to the new commissioners coming on the board, take the time to know the men and women behind the badge and you understand where they come from and who they are. Thank you.
And I'll just reiterate a couple of points, because I don't think they could be reiterated enough. This township has been unequivocal in its combination of hate, racist acts, acts of xenophobia that have happened over the last several years. Uh, we've made numerous statements uh, condemning these acts. Uh, we've been forceful in our combination of, of all aspects of uh, a, a, any type of racism. Uh, and it has been highlighted, uh, we have an existing policy reflecting whether it is on police vehicles, police uniforms, flags that are flown outside the township building, uh, that limits anything outside of, of what is sort of part of that township, uniform or township symbols. And so and, and that has been reflected, I think, in the professionalism that has existed in our police department and our, and our township at large. As was highlighted, um, an, an outside group made up of township employees, but it was an outside group was utilizing a symbol that was found um, to be offensive. And I think there's validating, exploring that and having that conversation and in sharing thoughts amongst both sides. Because again, at the end of the day, what is, what is abundantly clear is yes, this is a divisive symbol, but it is a symbol that it, it does mean very important things to both sides. And that warrants a conversation, it warrants listening to each other. Um, I don't think it ever warranted the litigation that has fallen. I did not support the resolution that was passed last year primarily because one, it was redundant and it was um, insightful against the other side. It, it wasn't going to serve any purpose other than um, roy to be, to be overly aggressive. And for that, we got to where we are today and we are not in a better place. Um, I cringe when I see Springfield Township on a headline in, in a local paper associated with a news outlet um, associated with this. Because with, you know, for most casual readers, without going into the nuance of the, of the, of the debate, um, they're going to come away with an impression uh, that's more negative than not of our township, more negative than not of our police department. Um, and that's a shame because it's not reflecting of the reality. The reality is that we're an incredible township, we have an incredible police department. And yes, we, like everyone else in this country, um, warrants uh, some reflection on some of these issues and, and, and needs to have conversations like this. But these conversations are not helped through litigation that we have, um, that we're considering continuing tonight. And for that reason, I am pleading with the members of this board that are considering continuing this um, to not. Because I do think that, you know, at the end of the, even if, even if, you know, like I said, this, this issue does warrant conversation, we can do it in other ways. We can spend the money that we'd spend on the appeal in other ways. And I do believe very sincerely there are real costs, and as I shared the, the other day, you know, we're in a competitive situation where we're looking to hire um, good police officers. And they might have offers from other townships. What's going to make them want to consider coming to work for us when their only impression, again, of Springfield Township is what they've read in the news recently, which isn't that positive? Um, I think there are real costs that we are imposing upon our police officers by putting them out on the streets with this overhanging, the, the, overhanging them. Uh, again, just a casual person passing through the township might have an impression that exactly, our police department is racist, uh, we're putting them in, in more harms way. And so, you know, this appeal will not happen overnight. It will, I think the attorneys let us know that it probably won't be heard until the summertime. Um, which means that again, it just, this issue hangs out there um, for months on end and it doesn't make our township better for it. I would like to see the, the conversation continue, but I would like to see it continue in a way that is done in, in much more methodical way with, with, with maybe professionals where we're, again, we are listening to each other and we're, we're trying to, because I do think that the deep importance that this symbol means to the police officers should be heard and, and understood what it means to them and their families. And at the same time, for the residents that find offense to it, um, I think, you know, their message should be heard as well. Uh, and that's again, getting lost in all this debate. So uh, to, to kind of close and summarize this, I mean, I, I do think that um, I, I just don't want our township to be another front on this larger culture war. Again, we're better than that and we can do things differently rather than again, fight with each other in, in a courtroom and spend money on, on these types of issues. Um, we can, we can do it much more effectively. So I do plead with you to consider, um, you know, for those of you who have stated that you're going to support this, consider changing vote, because I, I would like to see um, us close this chapter tonight, uh, and maybe move in a different direction towards reconciliation.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay.
Nay.
Please record a four to three vote.
Four to three.
Four to three.
May, Raton, Wilson and Lee in favor. Maxwell, Cobb, Standish, opposed.
Now, the board is once again open to receiving public comment. Hearing none, I will uh, accept.
Um, I am very heartbroken because I don't think you were listening and I don't think that you fully understand what steps that you have taken. And it's really, really troubling and unsettling to see your blatant disregard for the US Constitution, it's incredible. Now, whether or not this symbol is offensive, debatable, but guess what? The First Amendment protects offensive speech. Okay, that's just, that's something that happens, people are allowed to have their opinion. There are some limits on the First Amendment, but this type of speech is not curtailed, it is allowed. Um, and I think some of the sentiments echoed by the commissioners about what this stain will put upon this township, upon our officers, upon the morale of people who would like to speak up and support of those who keep them safe. And we have this toxic bully culture here in Springfield Township, a lot of Facebook warriors who use very insightful language against good men and women. And you guys have just added more fuel to the fire to have people disparage the best and brightest of Springfield Township. And I just, you read what you saw and I, I'm really um, not looking forward to what the coming months are going to have. So um, I say to the men and women who put on a uniform every day, who are willing to do the things that no one else is, the willingness to put themselves in harms way for people who don't even respect their basic rights. I commend you, I salute you, may God hold you close. And um, I just pray for your safety, because this will entice people to be aggressive, more so against our police force, thank you.
I will accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make that motion.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? In favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.